Do you want this? Oh, that big cracks me up. Okay. Um, do you guys want it live streamed? It's work session. Brian, your choice. You're the-
We've not been doing that. I don't know why we change.
Perfect. Okay, so Brian, if you want to take it over our mark or I sent you guys the ledger or we sent the, um, packet out. I know if you guys want to start with that and then move to the two or three things that we really, you know, some of the things that we really want to talk about. I don't know that there's one of the things that we're really going to talk about as part of legislation. So I don't know if you guys want to look at the- however you guys want to do your typical work session.
I have the packet and the way we have been doing it is going through committees, looking for reports. I don't know. Are people feeling that that is a valuable use of time? I feel like we, we don't really get a lot out of it, quite honestly. I was hoping for a little more, more, more reporting. But so do people want to go through their, their individual reports before? Or should we just jump straight to legislation? Does anybody have a strong opinion on that?
I say jump to legislation unless somebody has something pressing.
Anybody have anything pressing? All right, then, uh, then let's move on to legislation. Mark, do you want to talk us through the, the legislation on the, on the agenda?
Yeah, let me pull that up. Um, I know. How about as I pull all that up? What changes did you want to make to the pool stuff, Tiffany?
Um, no, it's just a question for you guys. So, um, quick version is somebody was complaining because they came after five o'clock and the pool people were not aware that we were doing an after five. And it is in legislation that it was that we were going to do an after five if we didn't, after five for $5 if we didn't have to abide by COVID rules. On the website was still the 2019, 2020 pricing or whatever. So somebody was mad even though it did say 2020 pricing. Um, but the website hadn't been updated at fair. Um, but the pool people were like, no, we're not doing an after five because they hadn't been instructed to. Um, honestly, we just hadn't talked about it. And so there was a big old Facebook post. Somebody was mad. Um, my question to you guys is, do you guys want to have? We, again, we kind of put it as an asterisk. David, maybe I'll refer to you more so. My two cents is, you know, a lot of people do come after five because it's less crowded. Obviously, if we do an after five for $5, it's going to be way more crowded. Um, we had a $14,000 weekend this weekend, just as an FYI for you guys. Um, so it's not that it's going to slow down because it's mostly memberships.
You say 14,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you talking about memberships?
All of the, no, I'm just talking about, yes, I'm talking about-
Total revenue.
Friday, Saturday and Sunday, we did $14,000 including memberships. We are up to 170 memberships. Um, just so you guys are aware, um, and if I don't have the legislative ability to do this, I will make sure that I can get this done. And you guys tell me if I have legislative ability to do this. I am capping memberships at 200. I think that if you guys do not cap memberships or allow me to cap memberships, you guys are, the village will be paying quite a bit of money. I think 200 memberships is plenty and it's, it's, it's a business part. I'm not, we have 30 more memberships left. We've already opened. I feel like anybody that wants one can still get one. Um, I don't know your guys' feelings towards that, but when it comes financially, if you don't cap it, at some point, you are going to stop bringing in money. And what that does is you're going to bring in 30,000.
That makes no sense to me.
I know it doesn't, but it's a, okay.
I think-
So if you let everybody have a hundred dollar, go ahead.
I think what she's saying, Tony, is if me and my wife buy a season pass for $175 or whatever it is for two, we pay $175 and we use the pool 30 times. If me and my wife don't buy a pass and we use the pools 30 times, we pay $600.
Correct.
By forcing people not to buy passes forces them to pay the higher per diem rate.
So the daily rate is what brings the village to not go in the hole. And I have now done this. Um, obviously I've, I've been vested in the pool. Um, because we did take last night or last year, I will not take credit for the pool. We were one of the only ones open. Um, but I will take credit for the fact that we stopped selling memberships because had we not sell, stopped selling memberships, we wouldn't have made $80,000. Simple as that.
We were around 100 memberships last year, right?
125.
No, we don't.
145.
We don't actually know that, right? So because we didn't track how many people came, came one time or how many people came two times, right? Because if somebody showed up once and thought, this is great. I'm going to be back a million times over the rest of the summer and had bought a membership and never came back, we'd have had $120 from them instead of 10.
We had a lot of people turned away for memberships that wanted memberships, so I will say that.
Sure.
Yeah, but you're not, just from a financial spreadsheet point of view, there's no-
Yeah, but, but if-
What you're saying is just, is your best, you know, your guts telling you that, but you don't have any numbers to support one way or another.
I can tell you that if you ask John, that's been there for 40 years. He also wrote, he also, him and I had the conversation today to shut off, are we going to shut off memberships because you make your money at the pool by daily rates? Period.
But who said that's going to change? You speculate.
Hold on, but let's, let's roll this back to the real question, right? The real question was, does the mayor have the administrative authority to stop selling memberships at whatever number the administration feels is their purview? Right? Uh, or is, is there, is there number? And as far as I-
Oh, you're stuck, Brian.
Well, there's got to be some kind of correlation between those who buy memberships and those who attend. In other words, uh, if, if memberships are capped, does that mean that then there are people that want to buy memberships that are denied? And that now they're paying a higher rate?
Correct.
Exactly. I don't think that's fair to the residents of this village to say-
The residents of the village have had two months to buy one.
I just bought mine two days ago.
We still have plenty. That's my point.
Well, I don't understand why, I don't, okay. I just want to go on the record as saying, I don't think we should cut off membership to the residents of the village.
Okay.
And just say all of a sudden, say, the first 200 residents of the village get a membership. Hurry, you know, that's just, I don't like the sound of that at all.
Well, are they all, are there a lot of non-residents that have bought memberships?
All of the above. We have a lot of non-member residents. We have member residents. We have all of the above.
Well, at 125 last year and 200 this year, uh, do we have any evidence to say that, that because we sell more than 200 memberships, that people coming and paying by the day are going to drop off?
We have no data to support any speculation one way or the other.
But here's what I would tell you. I'm the one that gets to see the numbers every single day. You guys are more than welcome to see the sign up sheets. You guys are more than welcome to. Again, if you guys don't want to do it, that's fine, but when we get to the end of the year or end of the season, um, we'll know.
Well, as far as what Brian was trying to, the point he was trying to make was get back to the question.
I agree. I totally agree.
Is, does, does the mayor have, uh, the right to determine the number of memberships? And I would say the answer is yes. It's part of administration of the village and yeah.
All right, can you all hear me again? I'm sorry. I, something crashed over here. Uh, did we, did we get to the, to the question and the answer or?
We ran around the bush one more time.
The answer.
Yeah, and, and Tiffany, Mayor Hughes, would you please, uh, mention again what John said about this?
It's the same. I mean, it's the same thing. He believes that we make our money off of our daily passes. Now, another option would be, and only because, you know, this, maybe this is a potential, maybe we limit it to 200 unless you're a resident.
I would be supportive of that, but I don't think we should limit the number of residents' memberships.
I don't have an issue with that whatsoever, Tony. I really don't.
Yeah, that would be my preference as well. Limit, limit, limited for, you know, up to 200. Once we hit a total number of 200, it's residents only. I think that is, uh, appropriate, right? Because we subsidize and I, yeah, we subsidize basically for our residents, right? It's-
I don't disagree. I, I do not disagree with that comment. See, Tony, I'm not an idiot. I will listen to you. I don't disagree with that at all. Um, because again, we, we want our residents to come.
With our grants and so forth with Columbus, is that okay?
I would assume so because we offer everything else to them and we've had them available for two months.
And it's still open to the public. It's still open to the public to pay the daily rate.
Correct. Okay, let's go back to the very first question. Um, the very, and so that's my answer, Tony, and I am totally on board with that. And I support exactly what you, you and Brian and everybody's saying. Um, so we will do that and we'll make a post that, um, we are going to stop selling at 200 with the exception of residents. Um, number two, the after five.
I think we need to bring that back.
So the after five, we as this body passed legislation saying that unless we were limited-
That's why we said-
By COVID, uh, by, by COVID restrictions, we would have a $5 after five for residents. So the question comes back to you. Are we limited by COVID restrictions at this time?
The answer is no, we're not.
Then we, then legislation already indicates that we should have a $5 after five for residents only.
And then, and everybody is okay with that one line because I know we, so for the record, we took that out for a year or two. Um, and then we switched it to residents only. We took it out completely. Then we switched to residents only. Everybody is still okay with resident after five must show ID.
For being known, right? They, they should be known to be residents, right? Like, yeah.
Perfect.
And, and if the people with the, the complaint on Facebook were residents, I think we should give them back their 10 bucks.
Don't have an issue.
Give them some pounds.
For, never mind, I'm-
Yeah, that does seem fair.
And I think for anybody that wants to watch this, and I'm going to say this, the best chain of action would have been to contact me instead of posting on Facebook. And that's my two cents.
And somebody said that too for, um, yep, but it didn't stop the process. It's, oh.
I know. Move on. It's, it's just one of those things. So anyways, okay.
The after, the after five, if there are people that don't want to join a membership, but they work till five, that's their, their only time.
Well, I bought my, my, my kids' friends come over after, you know, it's a lot easier to spend 10 bucks.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and quite honestly, the idea that somebody only goes after five wouldn't want a membership. We almost only go after five as a family. And that's because we know it's not crowded. So we, we usually get there at six o'clock and we may only go for an hour, right? But it's a great hour. It is zero stress. The pool's almost always, you know, it's us and two other families that are almost always there at that hour. It's delightful, so.
Okay, so Brian, would you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Bringing this back, pay attention. Do you hate it? Are so many people coming that it's actually not?
So I've only been there twice so far this year, but it was perfectly fine.
No, I'm saying now that it's going to be advertised that the after five is back. So just, yeah, just see if it's something that it does become busier.
I, I doubt, I doubt that it'll get crowded.
Perfect.
I, I love that it's available. I doubt it'll get crowded. Because even when it was, you know, I was a member back when it was $5 after five for everybody and I never thought it was crowded back then.
Perfect. Um, okay, so I'm done with the pool. Um, but anyways, we had a great weekend and, um, that was awesome. So I think we're back to legislation.
Yeah, so on our agenda for next Monday, we have, uh, excuse me, 2021-17 authorizing phase two of the, with Garmin Miller, I assume it meant of the contract with Garmin Miller, Associates Architects and Engineers and Design, et cetera, et cetera. There's going to be a third reading, uh, so we are going to be asked to pass this. Um, this just authorizes us to say, yep, we're moving forward. This is not anything as to, this is the final project or anything. It's getting them to the point where they can hand us a final project for us to vote on.
Uh, I'm not sure about that, but anyway, we're, we're being asked to spend $116,000, for this next, uh, phase where they're doing all the planning and drawing documents, et cetera, and sending it out to bid. Now, why you, why you wouldn't want them to send it out to bid after they did that work? I don't, that doesn't make sense to me, but, you know, that's the idea is we're going to spend this money. They're going to get it ready to, and send it out to bid. And so, yeah, we're, we are, we don't have to accept bids when they come in, but this, that's the point of this.
Yeah, I think what I meant Diane was, um, this is to get them to getting those final plans, not any approval of any plan since we haven't seen any. I know there are people who with the rough sketch we have, have issues with it still. This doesn't approve that sketch. This says, okay, start making something real for us, I believe.
Well, it's my understanding that they're going to be putting together a plan and then that plan is going to be put out to bid.
Well, you're right, and it does, I, I would, in terms of the, the having it ready for bid, that, that's when, I believe that's when planning and zoning inserts itself again and reviews the, uh, documents and makes the recommendation.
So could we have another review of the plan?
Another review of the documents and-
If we can, why don't we take a step back here? We have Eric Fisher.
We have Eric on that, yeah.
Who is, who is both our, you know, our, I, I believe our primary liaison with Garmin Miller and somebody who's gone through this process with other municipalities. So Eric, if you could refresh us exactly what it is we are agreeing to with this vote and the process going forward.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Happy Monday. Um, so basically what's going to happen is, um, I, I did hear Diane correctly. You are authorizing the next phase of the contract, which will obligate you to the 100,000 plus, uh, bill, which essentially is all the work that Garmin Miller will now put into creating biddable documents, which includes full building and engineered plan sets for the site. Now, in the beginning, you will have the opportunity, if there are changes to the final structure, if there are obviously locations, because I think there's still some discussion of different items in it. So if council wishes to proceed with a slightly different design to the, uh, footprint, you can do that in the beginning. Um, and at the end of the day, you will get a full building plan set that can be bid upon, um, by the, um, by the vendors out there, by the different contractors and GCs. Um, that section, once you get to that point, you'll, you know, once, once you get through a bid process, it's at that stage that you'll be able to vote again on which one you accept. So we'll have to go through, similar to what you did with the architect, in which we kind of went through a rating system. We'll have to do something very similar with any particular GC, uh, and their bid for you to settle on it. And the first time through, you may not get something you want and it has to be rebid. And there could be a number of different scenarios that that happens. And, you know, when we get there, we'll talk a little bit more about that. Um, but for this vote, this one is where you're obligating the village, uh, authorizing the mayor to enter into the next phase of the contract to then produce plan sets that can be bid on for the new building.
All right, and for clarification, Diane was suggesting that once those bid documents are prepared by Garmin Miller, that there was a review from planning and zoning, is that also part of the process?
Um, it would be a part of the process, yes. There would be a public review by P and Z, more to authorize. This is kind of a strange one because it's, it's your building at the end of the day and it's council's final word. So yes, they can give you a recommendation and I think it's one of their duties.
Right.
Um, so if there's any particular comments that come back from them, um, that would be the time.
Right, okay.
You figure that process out.
And then other things to remind us, this was, uh, uh, this was tabled to return or ask a question to Garmin Miller regarding, Tony's asked to move the police portion to the other, uh, to the westward side of the, of the building. Uh, and there was another question and Eric had put those to Garmin Miller and they replied, and those are in emails that have gone around.
That was correct.
So if you, those, those are your, those are your questions asked and answered. If you have any concerns about that, now is the time to voice them. Uh, but this is going up for its vote, uh, at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Well, what was it that said about the police being on the west side?
Uh, basically it said it was more expensive to put, to arrange the building that way.
Uh, you know what? I don't even want to get into it now. That's, I saw the responses and they don't make sense to me. And you know what I, you know what I feel about this? It just move forward.
All right, then, that's all that needs to be said is let's move forward.
I just wanted to point out that the date is still wrong on there. And May 17th is the day that we did not meet, right?
We'll adjust that, thank you.
Yeah.
So it's the second reading, not the third reading, right?
And it is-
I believe this is a third reading.
Third reading, correct.
When was this? Okay. The second reading was, uh, the 24th.
We had a reading on the-
24th, oh, right, right.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I have a question for you, Eric, if I may.
Yes, sir.
If at some point in the future, five years from now, if somebody wanted to add on to the community building on the west side, uh, is that feasible?
It is. You can buy you many things, Joe.
Well, I, I don't know why you would say that since one of the responses was they couldn't build the police on that side because there wasn't enough room. So that's not, that's what you're saying.
Well, ask the question about adding on.
I asked Diane, I asked Diane just for the reason that, uh, you know, if there's ever any future expansion needs, it wouldn't have to be an area as large as the police.
So-
But Garmin Miller can take into account, there may be additions when they design the building.
Part of the design, if I can point out, is with the, um, and of course, 100 years from now, you never know what the building needs. But in the near term, uh, the idea is that we, we have enough space to accommodate, um, the village's needs with this particular plan.
I had a question regarding the, um, parking. How many parking spaces are estimated to be able to be had for this, uh, design they did?
Uh, one second. We'll get that answer for you here. All right, so right now, I believe not including the police spaces, I've got 17 total spaces, six over here. Uh, and then they've got it, 11 across the top right there, um, off the road. So those are the new additional ones. And then there's five spaces for the cruisers on a redesigned parking lot slightly.
And a nice dumpster over there. I really like that.
The dumpsters, the dumpsters to meet, the plan. The dumpster is to meet Co. They stuck it somewhere. Again, one of the several detail items that can be adjusted. This is simply to produce a workable site plan.
I'm going to be fashioning this plan as long as I have to keep looking at it. I hate the parking lot up on the street. I hate having the dumpster and everything moving 10 feet away from the lake. We got an, we got a, a space or a storage space and can only have access from outside.
Right, right. No, I agree with all that. And, uh, the fact is, is that everybody wants a, uh, community room with 150-person seating capacity and, uh, the ability to park 20 cars. And, uh, this is always, this is, would be an issue with any design, of course, but it just, uh, it, it makes you wonder. Uh, and I know that 150 people don't, won't come in 150 cars necessarily. That's been pointed out to me as well. But still, I don't think that, uh, I don't know, to be, to me, I'm, I'm not sure where, where, it's a really hard space to do anything with. It's very difficult and, um, so granted, but I, I still don't, I feel like their, uh, responses to the question about putting the community building on the, on the east side was more, um, you know, we've had the discussion and we're not going to discuss it anymore. And so here it is. So it's going to be more, I, 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 I don't think that, uh,
Just because you don't like the answer doesn't mean that it's not built out.
Oh, that's not, that's not a tack. Okay, I'm not, I'm trying not to attack here, so.
Okay, and this is coming from the person that we did pay quite a bit of money to. Um, these were their results and-
Yep, okay, so I guess my question, okay, so my only thing is, I think it was so important to have a community building on the east side that I think I would, I wasn't part of it, of course. This is the administration's, um, uh, design. But I just feel like I, I would have had a really hard time not giving up on that so, uh, so easily. Because what they've done with the, they said, for example, and then I'll stop. They said, we can't put it on the east side because the grading, the grade on the east side goes down too fast. So you look at their design and you see they have this, they've added, uh, half again as much space on the east side in the area which they had said had a grading problem. And then they butted out the back and we all know the back of the police department drops down. And that, there's a, you know, a, a issue there, but that doesn't seem to be a problem with this design for them to be able to do this. But it is a problem when it's the community building on that side.
Exactly, Diane. Their response doesn't make any sense.
This is one of those details, if, if you want to look at it more seriously. Here's the thing, moving forward doesn't preclude you from going to the architect and saying, hey, give us a little more detail on this, which we can do. Maybe, maybe it costs you a couple thousand more dollars, right? At the end of the day, you get it, perhaps a more satisfactory answer from a design standpoint and some more data, right? And you can say, hmm, well, maybe that's really not what we expected, but it is what it is. So we'll go back to the old one before we draw everything up, right? But we still need to proceed forward with them if the intent is to do a building at the end of the day.
Which was my earlier point, that this doesn't cement us into this. And I will say, my read, and maybe I do not read it as carefully as Diane and Tony did. My reading of their response was, yes, we could do that. It would cost more money. Yes, that's exactly right. To be about $400,000 to $500,000 over what we thought our budget was going to be. If we want to take this up to 2.2 or 2.3 million, I could probably be persuaded to vote for that.
That's inaccurate.
We, we would have to look at a little more detail.
That's inaccurate, Tony. I would be, I could be persuaded to vote for that.
No, I'm saying, that's what they said. That doesn't mean what they said is accurate.
The only way you know that for sure is reduce it and then, and then bid it. That's the only pure way. Now, I will tell you, the architects have been doing a lot of projects. They're probably pretty close. I would say on any of these deals, if he tells you, hey, we believe it's going to be $200,000 more, he's probably within 10%. That's typical of good architects, all right?
At, at this point, I think that we have, uh, two, two options ahead of us, right? We, if, if they're, uh, and I think they both start with, with a vote at the next regular council meeting, right? So if, and three, three, three potential outcomes. One is enough of us are happy enough with where we're at to move forward based on the current design. So we got four out of six votes, four out of six yays. And at that time, we can either tell Garmin Miller to go forward or we can understand that it'll cost a few more dollars to pursue these ideas that Diane and Tony are pursuing, but that's after a yay vote, right? Uh, or on Monday, if four out of the six of us, uh, vote may, then we start fresh with, from scratch, right? Because I don't think that we, uh, you know, are, are in a place where we can just go round and round. Either we've got a, you know, as, as, as they used to say when I was a kid, you know, we got to poop and get off the top here. We, we, we continue these arguments for ongoing four years now.
Couldn't have said it better myself, Brian.
Right? For a, for a pitchfork at my own darn self, we'd be, uh, a third of the way through paying off $29.99 double rent over.
Hey, Brian?
Yeah.
You had me a minute ago.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm just reminding everybody that based on those plans, we'd, we'd be a third of the way through paying it all.
Based on my bathroom situation where I'm currently at? Might have taken him on that right now.
Hmm?
Speaking of bathrooms, does the new police have a locker room?
Yes.
Yes, they have a third of their spaces, lockers and bathrooms. I think it's about a third.
So they got a shower.
Yeah, I think that's enough conversation for that, uh, councilperson burger. If we can move on to the next piece of legislation. All right, the next piece, and unfortunately in my packet, I don't have the changes. So it's going to be, it's because it's, uh, 2021-18 modifying the fee schedule. But I don't have the attachment to it that shows the changes.
Fee schedule. No, because that's what we're in, that's what we're here for, is to discuss the changes. Yeah, okay. Do you have the one that shows certain things in red? Maybe you have any?
I don't.
Okay.
I mean, I might, but I'm sure it was in another email that I could Google for.
Eric, maybe you and I can kind of remember a few of the things. I know one of the number one things we wanted, I wanted to discuss, um, in the fee schedule is the solicitor peddler, um, permits, okay? The reason for that is we currently have it as $150. Um, there's really not a big, hang on, come on, I mean, sorry, um, kids. The, it shows $150 for somebody to come in and go door to door. Um, but the re, the initial reason for that was to do background checks and all of that kind of stuff. That is not able to be done due to whatever programs that we have. They can't just do that. Um, so, you know, myself and Leah and administration had been talking about some different- Um, so you know, myself and Leah and administration had been talking about some different, you know, justifying a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, because again, we're not really doing anything. So here's the question. Is it a hundred and fifty dollars because we don't want people here? Is it a hundred and fifty dollars because we were doing background? Brian, you look stressed at my conversations.
No.
Um, so you, you get where I'm going with this. Other than that, it needs to be fifty dollars or twenty five dollars or whatever. And we issue them a permit and then they go. But there's not really a big justification for a hundred and fifty dollars unless we're basically telling people it's a hundred and fifty dollars because we don't want you here.
Yes, so.
Say, I'm just being blunt.
So in the past, the one fifty was definitively there, if I recall correctly, uh, from the older, from the older administration to disincentivize, um, solicitors. So I think, I think the staff just needs to get you back, uh, and I think it's closer to fifty there, you know, you can reimburse yourselves for time, software, you know, permit issuing and any background checking. So I, I think it's just a, a number needs to be right in that ballpark, whatever that number is from Leah.
Yeah, she wanted it. I, I think she was comfortable at fifty.
That, that would seem appropriate.
Now, the other option was.
If I'm ice cream man Joe, do I do that once and then I can just do it? Or is that every day I'm coming in?
For a year, correct?
For you.
Okay.
Wait a minute, let's be clear here. This isn't something for an ice cream man that has to get a.
We're not there yet. We're first talking about solicitor and then we'll talk about peddler. Cause I think there's two different, isn't there two different ones, Eric, on there?
Uh, I don't have it in front of me, but that, what you said makes sense. I don't know if we separated them out that way.
I mean, I think we should. Well, I mean, Tony, do you agree with that? Like an ice cream truck should not have to pay a three hundred or a hundred and fifty or?
So what's the difference between a solicitor and a vendor?
Yeah, to me it's different. So, but this is what this part, you know, just to reiterate this, this is what this conversation was supposed to be for is what do we want it to do?
So you could have someone coming door to door, Diane, to answer your question, um, like a solicitor, someone who wants to just, you know, sell you. A guy came by my door on a segue the other day as he's zipping around and he's trying to sell me something to spray all the bugs. So I had to shoo him off because I'm generally am a fan, except for my mosquitoes and I deal with them differently anyways. But the vendors, you know, it's a whole different ballgame, you know, where you've got a truck that comes through selling ice cream or whatever other wears. Um, and you may want to permit them and feed them differently. So.
Well, they need a food license.
But that's not our responsibility. It's.
So, so if we, if we want to go down that route, first we have to make sure that we have a clear definition of what a solicitor is and what a peddler is. Right? Because, uh, you know, uh, that would be A. And then B, we need to make sure, um, you know, when we define peddler, right? Because someone bringing something into the village to sell, right? If that's how we define it, that's both an ice cream man and the Kirby vacuum sales.
Correct.
And I, I, I actually don't law it either, but that's me. Uh, but I would be keen on, um, you know, also allowing within the language uh, an administrative variance, right? So that if the village, the, the administration wanted to host or welcome in a ped, a peddler of the food variety, right? Like the administration says, hey, today we are going to let this ice cream truck drive the village. They're invited in, we don't charge them a fee. It's one time, we control the when, we control the how, that's great. Right? But you know, beyond that, I'm not super keen on.
We could have, we could have a preferred vendor list.
No, I don't want a preferred vendor list either. It's, it's kind of like the food truck too, right? We invite a food truck in, right? We control the when, we control the how, we invite them, we don't charge them a fee because it's at our request. That's great. But if we set up a peddler's license that anybody can pay us fifty bucks and start selling stuff, you know, out of their food truck within our village, basically anywhere they can legally park their truck, you know, they, they could do that.
Well, I kind of do find the difference between a solicitor and a vendor as a vendor is selling something or there's a point of purchase right then and there. And a solicitor is trying to get you to buy a vacuum that they ship next week. And there should be some process in there if there are a lot of complaints from residents that they could be taken off the list or, or something.
I believe that's part of the.
Terminex.
So there is a do not knock list. This is an FYI. We do have one. And if you didn't know that and you went on it, make a note of it.
Don't give Terminex a permit. That's all I ask.
All right. So other people's thoughts? Tony, you, you looked like you were ready to interrupt me a minute ago. So I'm sure you got thoughts.
Always ready to give my thoughts. Uh, well, my opinion, there should be the vent, you know, the food trucks that go and park somewhere, you know, I think that's something that we need to, you know, require licensing for or a permit or whatever, not a license, a permit. Uh, you know, but the guy driving around the street, I, 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 I would have to ask about, you know, if you're driving down a public street, can we prevent someone, can we prevent an ice cream man from coming through? You know, if you're on a public street and, you know, to me, that's something that we have no say over.
That's a good question. They can drive, they can certainly drive into the village and they can use the public right of way. Uh, but I believe we have some authority as to whether they can sell from the right of way.
Well, and this is, I think we need to, we need to.
Correct.
Well, if it, and again, if it's food service, they have to have the, uh, county health permit.
Right. Yeah, we, we are not going to solution the county's health permit, Joe.
They, they could provide that to us as part of their permit as an example.
So, and then just to bring this full circle, if you guys are not ready to make a decision, obviously we don't have to pass it on Monday. But as an FYI, the reason that we brought this to you guys, um, and I don't even know if it's a third reading or not, but the reason that we brought this to you guys now is we're in the height of summer. And we don't really have a guidance as to what you guys would prefer that we do. And to allow, you know, do we want to let ice cream trucks or do we want to be difficult if an ice cream truck or, you know, do you guys just want to say, hey, just, you know, free for all? Um, I am a huge fan of being in control of the food trucks, you know, I hate to say this, but you know, Sally decides she wants to have a food truck on Minerva Lake Road and it blocks all the traffic, it, it's, no, that like, that gives me anxiety of people calling and complaining and all of that kind of stuff. Where we're doing it now just works perfect and it doesn't affect people. Um, so you know, I'm, I am a huge fan of not allowing people just to start having fourteen food trucks on Friday night wherever they want. Um, so I do think that there needs to be a little bit of control on that, but you know, I'm all for if, you know, an ice cream person wants to come through here. Now that said, I think that there's plenty of residents out there that want to make sure that, you know, we're not just letting any random person in, you know, sell in the village to their children or to their, you know, grandparents or whatever. So I don't have, you know, I, I don't care which way we go, but I know Leah would like some guidance on the solicitor permit more than anything. You know, if you guys wanted to discuss, you know, solicitor versus peddler or whatever. Point being, um, this is something that we really want to get in the books and on legislation as soon as possible. Um, I know Mark is having a legislative committee meeting next, um, Monday at six fifteen at the community building. Um, maybe that's something that we could look at there, Mark. I don't know if you want to. I don't want to be here until nine o'clock at night talking about solicitor permits unless you guys do, and I'm sure you probably don't. Um, but you know, if you guys want to kind of think about it for a little bit and then maybe give Mark some stuff and then maybe we could finalize it. If we got done with the meeting, I would be more than happy to make some adjustments since we're at the community building Monday and get it finalized where we want it to be. Um, but again, my question, my point to you is it, we would really like to get this done because we're in the height of summer, but if we can't, I, I don't want to push something and it not be right.
Well, sorry. So let me just ask a quick question for my own Claire, from my understanding. The, the chief, the first reason why this was brought in front of us is that the current legislation says a hundred and fifty bucks, right?
Right.
And we're looking to right size that. I can tell you that if we wanted to move ahead with an immediate action, I would support fifty dollars. But I would also like to add that that should be an annual endeavor, right? Not a hundred and fifty dollars for two years because, you know, Johnny's landscaping service may be great this year, but then we find out that they're nothing but a scam by next year. And our vetting process could help our constituents out to avoid authorizing a permit for them next year, right?
So that is the case. It is every single year. That is the way that we do it. When ATN comes in, um, we charge them every year, um, the, you know, whatever.
I think the permit, if, if you look at the peddler's soliciting ordinance that we've passed, I think it's six months.
It might be. That would be. Even better. I agree.
A hundred and fifty dollars for a food truck to come service seems pretty steep to me.
Yeah, they're not going to do it. Um.
Which is why, which is why an asterisk in a, you know, a, a language that allows for an administrative variance does a few things, right? A, uh, you know, would allow them to help a, help a business that is known to be, you know, upstanding, but, uh, you know, just starting out to knock on some neighbors' doors or, you know. Yeah, that's why we would want something that says the administration is allowed to make good choices.
Sounds good to me. I'm going to go ahead and adjust it to fifty. Uh, and then maybe, you know, get it as close to where we think we need it to be. And then if maybe we want to talk about it for seven seconds in legislation, in case there is any last minute changes we want to next Monday, Mark.
Is there a preliminary copy on this?
She's, she just said she's going to fix that, get it out to us, Joe.
Okay, great.
All right. And then, and then what I would suggest actually is if we just move ahead with that change and then we start a new conversation with what else about our, our, our fee schedule needs addressed? So let's, let's fix the thing we know need fixed now, and then we can look at a bigger issue with a, with a second action.
And then just so you know, we have fifty dollars for the community building rental.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which is what it had been, but this is where you guys might kill me. But it's, we're not going to reimburse you the fifty dollars. Like apparently we were renting the building for fifty dollars and then giving the fifty dollars back. Well, first off, that's twice as much work.
That's in a code too, I think.
Huh?
I think it's in a code for something, you know, it's in writing that fifty dollars and it's refundable.
Okay. Well, we're going to fix that legislation. I'm going to find it. Um, because number one, Tony, you, and I'm going to get you on this one. I'm just telling you, you want to talk about making things easier, then that would make things easier. First off, Brian has to go in and clean the room, sweep the floor, do all of that after the fact. So there's that issue. And then you've got the simple fact that we're driving over, depositing a check to turn around and write it back to them. And give it.
I would be in favor of charging a fee, not.
We are. Oh, no, that's, that's a fifty dollar fee and it says non-refundable.
Well, I'm thinking even more than fifty.
Well, I think a hundred dollars is fine.
Yeah, because we want it as a feature. Like again, we, we, and you know, I know I came off really bad about the pool thing um, with residents, but we want the residents to rent it. We want it for a baby shower. We want all of that stuff. So that's the other thing that's on there. Then I will check legislation, Tony, and find out if that's in there and I will bring that to your guys' attention to repass it.
Yeah.
And this would make it more difficult, but you know what? Why not? Cause I've been on condo boards and such. I, you know, charging fifty dollars that we keep. And then I don't, I, I don't know why we're going in and cleaning. People should clean up after themselves. And if they don't. Well, I mean, and then an extra two hundred dollar cleaning deposit as a separate check. You say, we'll tear up this check when we look and see that you did a nice job cleaning it. And if not, we'll call you and give you two days before we deposit it if we have to do it ourselves.
So that's what we were doing, um, just as an FYI, we were keeping some people's fifty dollars. Now this is like pre-me. Um, that is my understanding as to what was happening. If they had to do some excessive cleaning, they would just say that it's, it's a cleaning fee. Um, but that very, I, I'm only aware that it had happened once or twice. And I personally witnessed Brian clean, um, the mats and stuff like that. So I just think, and I do believe that there is something at the bottom of the contract that does say something along those lines. Cause a lot of people leave a credit card hold. Um, they have a credit card on the bottom of the form and it basically says that your chart, your card will be charged X for whatever. Um, and again, we're not trying to be difficult to the residents. That's for sure. I mean, we want them to rent the building. We want them to use it. We want them to be able to, um, have some sort of perk and we don't want to, you know, take advantage of it, but we also fifty dollars to, to, to use the building and all of that just seems fair. And then we'll readjust it when we get to the new building, when we actually have a good facility.
Sounds good.
So that was.
Onward and upward, Mr. Bruger.
That's the last thing that's on the agenda for, uh.
There should be, I thought there was three. They're not.
That was.
Oh, yeah, the other one's nothing. Um, we're not going to.
Oh, sorry. The last one's the adopted attached budget for the village.
Yeah.
And that will be the meeting on the twenty eighth.
Yeah. Mayor Hughes, you had asked me to remind you, uh, so we, we already had a Garmin Miller discussion and I think we handled that. The other one was you said there was some conversation regarding a cruiser that we needed to have at this meeting.
So it had no legislation in front of you, any of that kind of stuff, but, and I, I actually Googled it to see what it was. Um, we get our cars from Ford, which you guys are aware of, and right now there is the Ford microchip shortage. We were talking about whether or not, obviously we get a new cruiser every year, twenty twenty two. Um, the concern is we are, we don't know, depending on when we order it, will determine when we could potentially get it. And the longer we wait to order it, the longer we stand the chance of not getting it even the end of twenty twenty two. Who knows? Um, it's a Google topic that you can Google. There really is a Ford chip shortage and it is caused by the pandemic. They've actually stopped making some of um, the fleet because of this shortage, they can't get cars out there. Um, if you know anything about the car business, you know what's going on. Um, but again, that's pretty much the case. So the thought was to go ahead and get it ordered now. Um, but what could potentially happen is it could come in in twenty twenty one, it could come in in twenty twenty two. I would want to dot our i's and cross our t's because there is no way in this world, I want to order one, it come in and then come to you guys. Um, I would prefer we do a supplemental appropriation and do all of the information in the event that it comes in in twenty twenty one and it's not a surprise and nobody throws a conniption fit. So it's more of a, this would be the twenty twenty two car. Um, I'm saying that on a public record, we'll say it three times. Um, so that's pretty much, you know, if we order it now, we could get it in October, November, December. The reason that I'm saying that it could come in this year is there are actual, um, my understanding is there are some actual cruisers that are available. Um, but once those cruisers are gone, that's when you're going to go on the backlog. So that's why I'm saying there could be a chance to get one because there are active cruisers that have not been purchased yet that are available sitting there. Um, but we don't know, we don't know when it's going to come in. I, I, we can go in circles about this. So you know, I know what the touchy topic is, you know, when it comes to police cruisers, I know all of that, you know, we do have a large police budget. Um, it, it's just a matter of this would be the twenty twenty two cruiser and we would order it now.
What's the typical lead time for, for this kind of purchase?
So normally we do it in like August to September and we usually get it in January, like February. This year did take a little bit longer, but as you see, we've already had, we've already gotten it. We've had it for what, two or three months?
Okay.
So, and that's ordering it in August, around August, September. So normally, no, they don't take that long. That's outfitted and everything by the time it ends up on our door. But we, again, we just, we have no idea what next year is going to hold in the backlogs. Um, and then just, you know, this is just something that we are starting to see a big difference in our cruisers not. So I think Brian was on the council when they started to increasing. Um, and I will say that as much as I was not a huge fan of it also and will admit to it, um, we're not seeing our cars in the shop all the time. The cruisers run eight hours straight, which is again, if you don't know that, you just don't know it. So it's very difficult for people to understand, you know, what, what's the purpose of having all of these cars? What's the purpose of all of this? So, you know, being able to have a K nine car that has, um, all the K nine stuff in it. I mean, it's just, it's been very nice. It has been very nice. And Brian, I, I would say of everything, that was one of the smarter things that you guys did do is increase the fleet because it actually has saved over time the repair bills. So I, I, I remember asking so many times, why do we have all these repair bills and we just don't see them now? We see them, but you know, it might be the AC or something like that, but we're not seeing them like we used to.
Well, I have something I'd like to ask because it's my understanding that the cruisers are used for all the radio communications. There's no base station as we, as we speak in the police station. Yeah. And you know, that, uh, that requires repair and so forth and so on, requires bigger alternators and all that batteries. Would we want to? Would we wanna consider some sort of base station on the new building? No, I don't think that's even, that's, that's.
Oh, the county handles that.
We, we, we can put a pin in that and discuss that in our next business con, or building conversation, but that is not a part of this conversation regarding whether or not to have a, right, the question in front of us right now is, are we open to a supplemental appropriation to allow the administration to place an order for a vehicle now that we would have otherwise ordered next year?
No, it would be ordered at the end of this.
Oh, oh, okay, yeah, so ordering it earlier rather than like.
But it could come into 2021.
Yeah, but it could show up now. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It could show up in three months, it could show up in two months, it could show up in January.
Right, if, if, if my math thing is right, what you said is we normally order it end of August or September, so it's really ordering it two months early and rolling the dice that it shows up in this fiscal year instead of next fiscal year for, for appropriate, this budget year or next budget year, instead of next budget year for appropriation purposes. Right?
Are we, are we still paying cash for our cars now?
Yeah, we are no longer leasing them, which has also been great.
Okay, so it'll be, uh, something that you've already checked with Kim.
We've already checked with him, absolutely.
There is enough cash to.
She does not.
That's not a small, it's not a small amount of cash.
No, it's not.
If you haven't, have, if you haven't budgeted it, so.
Correct. No, it is not a small amount. Kim is fully aware, Kim is okay with it. Again, it would come out of 2022. So it'll adjust the numbers next year. It just won't look as pretty this year.
No, that's not logical, but okay, I get, I get what you're saying, but we don't have a 2022, but we have a projection budget for it.
Through, through, through the wonders of accounting magic, the money will come out of next year's budget. Right? Cause it's all money, money's all.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, that's, that's.
Already projected.
But, uh, you know, the, the, yeah, if you don't have the cash though, you don't have the cash. You can't say, you can have it next year, I'll, I'll buy it today, but you'll get your cash next year.
All right, we'll be.
So again, that, that's what.
You got it, Tony, you got it, that's great.
So, again, it's, it's been really nice to be able to spread out the cars the way that we have, the repair, like, again, the repair bills haven't been horrific. Um, it's nice having, you know, the K9, and it, it will be nice to be able to share and do all of that kind of stuff, so, you know, it is what it is. But.
Okay, I just have one other question that, uh, since it's a work session, is, uh, you men, you mentioned the, uh, uh, this is upcoming for next year, or a discussion for next year or whatever, but that we have, if the school requests a, and some of the schools no longer request a, um, officer to be on site.
Middle schools do.
So Westerville Middle School still has that policy?
I've never not seen one at Heritage, where my kid was at.
So you're saying that we can't just tell Westerville to take care of it, take care of it themselves, and that we're responsible? I am hoping this does not mean another car.
Well, again, we would, we would, we will end up with five total. We are going, we will end up with five total.
You always trade in one. What do you mean? It's always we end up with four.
We would keep one as the K9.
What, what?
So, here's the deal, it would come out of, when Chief has already talked about this before, it, it's gonna come out of inventory, we're not gonna keep trading that, that would be the permanent K9. We would keep that one. Right now, we get $7,000 for a trade-in. That's the difference.
We, we're supposed to have four cars, and, and all of a sudden, I knew this was out there, it just was.
Um, yeah.
We're gonna have five cars now, instead of maintaining four, we're gonna maintain, we're gonna have a fifth car out of the parking lot for the dog.
I'm saying it can be used for that.
I guess that's a discussion for the future.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, it would just be.
Parking place on.
I don't think the dog can even drive.
Exactly, Joe.
So, so I, I think where this, I, in my opinion, and people are always wanting to tell me I'm wrong, where this lands is that, uh, Mayor Hughes, when you are ready to ask for that supplemental appropriation is when we'll finish this argument.
Okay.
Right, I mean, until then, until then, it's just an awareness.
Okay, so what I will do, Brian, is I will go ahead and just put it in front of everybody, and that's what I've done with the streets, that's what I've done with numerous things.
Yeah.
You guys can, you guys can decide what you guys wanna do. Um, and Diane, to go back to that for 30 seconds. Um, there will be a discussion with Dr. Kellogg, I'm sure that that's where that conversation's gonna go with Westerville City Schools. Um, that conversation has not happened, um, because we are still a year and a half-ish plus away from that happening. Um, elementary, you're correct. Um, our officers do go down there, there's no doubt about that. Um, but as far as an actual resource officer, we do not have one inside of Hawthorne on a daily basis. Um, that will be extremely shocking if that doesn't happen in the middle school. Um, I would anticipate having a resource officer, and I would anticipate that it's going to be a Minerva Park officer. Typically, the way that that happens is Westerville Schools do pay for it for the school year, is again, my understanding. Um, at that point, they would drive one of our vehicles down there, because they would be in one of our, our cars, because it would be one of our officers.
And then that car would sit there the entire school day while that guy is, that person, male or female, is there.
Correct.
I, I, I just, okay, we're just a little, all I'm saying is we're just a.
Have you ever seen an officer, because again, you may need, okay, I, I, I guess I've never.
I know that, I, I just think it's, uh, for, for us to, to be able to afford, if, if Westerville wants to, wants to pay for a car too, that'd be great, because you're saying they'll pay for it, I don't know what it is.
Salary of an officer.
Just the salary, not benefits, that, I mean, do they pay the loaded cost of, again, this is a future, it's a future conversation.
Yes, and then that's what I wanted to tell you. It is a conversation that will happen with the Chief, myself, and Dr. Kellogg, and probably anybody else that is part of safety at Westerville City Schools.
I have one question, and that is, does a Westerville officer have jurisdiction on school grounds?
That's, that's the conversation. Um, I am pretty certain, and I, I'm gonna answer this to the best of my ability, and I know I'm on a live stream, so I don't know that I'm correct 100%. Um, but Genoa and Central are in Genoa, and it is a Genoa officer that I always see in Genoa. Um, there was a situation that happened at one of the football games, and it was a Genoa officer that showed up in Minerva Park, um, to handle the situation. So, and met with our officers. So, in Genoa, it is not Westerville, it is Genoa that is the officers that is up in that area. My understanding is that's why it will likely be a Minerva Park Police, because they are in Minerva Park, and again, maybe there's special duty, um, for a Westerville officer to be there, but I would think that that would be the only way is if they were on some sort of special duty, because I, 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 I'm not an officer, I, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm, I'm not able to answer those questions without having a conversation with um, Dr. Kellogg, and that's something that, you know, I don't anticipate having that conversation for at least six months to a year.
You might wanna ask Jesse.
But they're gonna, I mean, we're all gonna know. I mean, yeah, it's, it's not like we're just gonna say, okay, you know, you guys can do it and then not have jurisdiction. I mean, obviously, they, they know, they know the answer, I don't, because I haven't asked that question. I'm sure I can get the answer to that question in about 30 seconds. I'm exaggerating. I can email somebody.
Yeah, I, I, if I may, I would, Chief and I actually were talking about this the other day. He, he knows about this, just ask him at next Monday evening's meeting or whenever you like.
Okay, uh, then that was the cruiser discussion that was on my agenda. Did anyone else have anything else they wanted to discuss this evening?
I have one very brief thing. Um, last week, I was asked to look up some things about goose control.
Yeah.
Um, for this or next year, and what I have found is that the best way, according to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, appears to be from disrupting them early on in the breed, in their season, so that they don't make nests, and it breaks the cycle of continuous nesting sites. So, the breeding period for Canada geese is most often described as February through April-ish. So we kinda missed the boat on that for disturbing them out of nesting. That being said, if it is something that we want to pursue, there is, there are numerous agencies that focus on goose disruption, mostly through irritating sounds, noises, or, um, trained dogs are just gonna chase them off. What my recommendation would be, admittedly limited background, uh, but what my recommendation would be is that we plan to budget next year for some sort of disruptive uh, procedures to be going on from about February through April, be it dogs, pyrotechnics, sound. Um, and we do that for a couple years and break the cycle.
There are certain plants that'll chase them out too, because, uh, uh, Professor Bregg brought this up in his presentation, we still have on video, I'll have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, so, so real quick, since I've managed a program, uh, for another municipality, yes, noise, pyrotechnics, those kind of things do work, but the amount of noise you have to generate is rather, um, disruptive. Uh, residents typically don't like that. The quietest, the most effective route is the dogs.
That's what I was seeing. That's what I was seeing as well.
Right.
So those are my recommendations. I also, I'm, I'm sorry, Diane, go ahead.
No, I, I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, the second thing, the second thing that I wanted to discuss was the lake cleanup is scheduled for this Saturday, Sunday, so we're gonna need to get the dam lowered, um.
Well, I, I would say with all the rain that we got going on right now, it wouldn't, whether it was.
Yeah.
What was that?
Open or not.
Where would I go, or where would one of us go to ensure that that has been done?
I think what Tony's saying, David, is we're getting 50% or better chance of heavy rain from here until Friday.
It's supposed to rain all weekend, too. Well, I haven't done it yet, but opening up the valve requires bringing over, uh, engine hoist to lift up the lid to the where the valve's at, so.
So, is it the perception of the group that it would be wise to use our fallback rain date and begin publicizing that?
It's supposed to rain all weekend, I heard, but I, so that may be a consideration, but.
Well, the little weather man.
Residents go berserk when you up and down the lakes, up and down, up and down.
Well, this would be, I, I hope we're talking about the way it used to be, where you let it lower just so you could see the shore and walk on just a piece of it, and then turn the, close the valve immediately, not leave it open. Right?
Well, we've got a lot of some of the. Cleaned up. On North Lake.
I mean, I know, it's, it's not a sign, I realize it's, it's a guess, but you would open the valve, let it go down to the level you want it, and it might take a day, it might take two, depending on what the level is at now. And then you, as soon as it got to the level that you wanted to do the trash picking, you would turn it off.
Close the valve.
It's not exactly, it, what, what happened last, or, it's not until it doesn't rain substantially for about 10 days to two weeks before it goes down that low, low enough to get in there. You know, so, it, to, to say that, you know, wait for it to go down and then turn the valve back and then close it back up, I mean, that's, again, it's just dependent on the rain. That's why I think. Open the valve, wait and hope that it doesn't rain for a couple weeks, and then that's when you can get in there. I mean, it's.
So circling back, circling back, it sounds to me that the weather forecasts would indicate the, uh, smart move would be to hold it on the weekend of the 19th, but still will need to get the dam opened um, in short order to ensure that everything is as low as possible. Does that sound like a fair statement? If so, I can make some Facebook posts tonight that we're gonna probably go through with the rain dates.
Well, either that, or, either that, or just, we can just tell people, well, when we see that the lake is, when we see that the lake is about where it should, where it needs to be to do the work, we can post signs.
And July.
Have it be a little more spontaneous.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, would, um, would there be many logistical issues on your end if we went to the rain date?
No, I'll email them and ask them to bring it next Wednesday instead of this Wednesday.
Okay, well, in that case, I think that it sounds like the smart move would be to open up the dam in short, in the near future and publish some posts about moving to the rain dates. Does anyone have any large issues with that?
Well, what, if any of the cleanup, which never gets to the north end of North Lake, which is the worst part, uh, lowering the lake, there's all muck there. I don't know that lowering the lake is gonna facilitate any easier way to clean up there than.
Muck and it's time to dry.
All we're doing is, yeah, I don't think it'll be dry. Uh, you'd have to really have it. I, normally, you know, you, you're, you're getting close to the shore so that you, the whole point of lowering the lake so you could see the the bottom, is so, so as you can see the trash that's, all you're getting is the trash that's pushed to the shore. And you're picking that up with a picker, or you're getting down there if you're into it. But, uh, but you're right, it's, it's gonna be mucky, it's, it's.
The odds of it. Bree up here on the north end of North Lake is mostly, uh, uh, timber. Now, there's a bunch of trash, sure.
You know, as far as that goes.
Well, that would require some.
It would be great to have an expedition. I mean, you're saying nobody works up there, but that's all private property, so someone would have to, a resident would have to coordinate that, and, and walk a team, or have a team meet them over there, and then, then, uh, guide them through, whether it's pulling rocks out or whatever, but that has to be, you know, they, people can't just wander off on this property.
I checked with Eric a while back, and actually, the shoreline's not public property. It's.
Well, you gotta get to the shoreline, you're gonna take a boat or what?
No, they, if, if I may, there, there is a way to start at the shoreline, along Minerva Lake Road, to work your way up around the North Lake. It is going to be a little, um, well, at some points, it's going to be a little weedy.
Ooh, treacherous, a little, yeah, I know, I want that side, and it's, it's not gonna, the lake's not gonna be down that far.
You can, yeah, you can, you can, you can do it, but.
So.
Shorter answer is I'll get the, oh, oh.
I'd add, make those posts. And we can hope for some excellent weather the weekend of the 19th, and if everything gets as low as it can and dried out as it can, I'm sure we'll be able to get some people up to the north end too. At least we'll do our best.
And also, uh, you know, toward the end of July and August, is, there's very little rainfall, and that's.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to hold a second lake cleanup like we did last year too. I think those went over well.
Hoover almost dries up in August.
Oh, we act, visible, measurable progress, and I think it'd be a wonderful thing to continue.
Okay.
All right, that's everything I have.
I just sent an email to see if they will drop it off around June 16th. Um, and I will let you know if that's an issue or a problem, um, just because I usually do it way earlier in advance. Um, and just making sure that they have a dumpster available. So I would assume it's fine, um, but I won't know probably until late tomorrow. So I will update you as soon as possible.
And then I will update the post.
Perfect.
And, oh, you'll love it.
You could go ahead and post that it's been canceled and stay tuned for the new date, just so if people are planning on coming on Saturday, they can make other plans. Again, totally up to you, I'm not telling.
Sounds like a better idea, good.
All right, then, with that conversation handled, is there anything else?
This, the, the, the deadline for the newsletters, it's the Monday, the 21st.
Okay, deadline for the newsletter, Monday 21st?
And then tomorrow night is, just to recap, Brian, before we go, tomorrow night, sorry, is communications via Zoom. And then the following is streets, both at 7:00 PM. One Tuesday, one Wednesday. And for a final answer, Mike Lickinger has been invited. I prefer to have Mike Lickinger there. It is in person. Is there anybody against that? At all, having Mike there on Wednesday. And everybody is invited. I know if you guys are not on the committee. And everybody is invited. I know if you guys are not on the committee and you don't want to be there, more power to you. But, you know, this is always a great conversation when we're dealing with fun sewers.
I believe I have NPCA'd it. At night.
Okay. Yeah, it's probably the same time.
Street Committee.
Yeah, if it's in person, like, at least we have the, maybe the opportunity to put some of these charts up on the big screen.
We don't have a big screen, but we can bring out some paper.
But TV's not up there anymore?
No, I think he's talking to be able to write on like charts.
Well, there's gonna be, uh, Mike will have a lot of.
Oh, you mean just like.
Maps and charts, and they're, they're hard to see on a little computer screen.
No, you were talking about a whiteboard or something earlier, that's what I thought you were talking about.
Well, I had asked you if there was a chalkboard in there.
Yeah, no, there's not. That's what I thought you were referring to. But yes, Brian, we do have the.
Yeah. All right, last, uh, last, last, last call, going once, going twice. All right, I am calling this meeting to adjournment. Everybody have a wonderful evening.
Bye.
Hi, guys.